Is talk about safety. And I, for whatever reason, last night, that song came in my head and I. Yeah, because there's new people. Do we need to turn off some of the instings? That part of the problem last night? For the noise? Turn them. This is my third night into ninety degree gymnasium, so I would like the record to state that I'm getting a little punchy. Maybe some miscues as I'm reading through some of those slides. Seems like ten forty-five, right? It went to. You're gonna let us know, Tim, when you're ready? Go, go. Okay, go ahead, Luke. Uh, yeah, I guess.
All right. This is for the Hancock School Committee meeting on August thirteenth. I'm clear that we do have forum. Uh, to start the meeting, for those people that are joining us for the first time, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm the board chair, Luke Gross, and our members are.
My name is Kristi Dyer.
Tracy Moon.
Amy Johnston.
Excellent. Thank you very much. First order of business, any adjustments to the agenda? No adjustments. Uh, next item is our discussion items, which is the presentation of the Fall 2020 Returning to School Planning. Katrina.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thanks for joining us, uh, whether you're here in the, um, not so cool or air-conditioned gymnasium. Uh, or those of you that are joining us via Zoom, uh, or, uh, some other platform. Uh, Dr. Harriman is here with me, uh, and she is going to be monitoring, uh, the Zoom platform, uh, and we will answer questions as we can, uh, while we're going through. But we're going to work through, uh, our pandemic reopening plans, uh, and have a few, uh, comments to make prior to that. So, uh, first of all, I want to start just by, uh, thanking our teachers, uh, and Dr. Harriman, uh, for their input and support, uh, starting back in March. It's been challenging, to say the least. I know, not just, uh, here for school folks, but for parents as well. And, uh, we appreciate all that they do and all they're continuing to do to get, to get ready to provide a great experience for students, in whatever manner we're back, uh, for the coming school year. Uh, and so, uh, our presentation tonight is really gonna stay within, um, the things that we can control, um, because time is of the essence. Um, we know that there are a lot of challenges. Um, we have kids too, uh, and so we are, um, very aware of the many, uh, opinions, um, the, 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 the politics that are surrounding some of this, you know, we, we, we see and, and read the same things as, as you folks do. Uh, and so our purpose here tonight is not to debate or resolve any of those things, uh, but instead, really, our task is to work within that, uh, main Department of Education and Centers for Disease Control, uh, framework for, for reopening. And, um, in many cases, we have a lot of non-negotiables that we need to follow, uh, to be able to reopen. And we're doing our best to, uh, prepare to follow those so that we can get students back, which is ultimately what we want. Uh, and, and hats off to our educators, uh, as well again, because I know that they want to get back sincerely. They, uh, they wanna see students and have them here in the building, uh, and of course, they want to do it safely, as do we. Uh, let's see. So, um, we, uh, still have many unknowns, so I'm just gonna put a few things out there right at the beginning. Uh, we're working on them. We hope to have answers as soon as possible. Uh, and those things surround particularly athletics, um, after-school programming and extracurricular activities. And we're really unsure at this time, uh, what we will or won't be able to do. I, I can tell you that I'm seeking some alternatives for after-school programming that wouldn't be in the building. Um, we're concerned about whether or not we'll have space to do that with the cleaning protocols we need to go through, uh, in the afternoon. And additionally, uh, we have students who would have, um, gotten on a bus at seven o'clock in the morning, wearing a mask and could potentially be here till five o'clock at night in a mask. It's a, it's a long day. Um, you know, for our, our youngest learners, who happen to be the, the students that participate in that program the most. Uh, and particularly in the fall, when it's, uh, very warm, and of course, we don't have air conditioning. So there's some concern around that, um, but equally, you know, we balance that with, uh, the notion that we know parents, uh, depend on that after-school care. So we're working through that, um, and athletics and extracurricular, and we'll let you know just as soon as we, uh, are able to. Uh, we will have a parent, uh, survey that goes out tomorrow. Um, just with, the memo will have the information that we're presenting tonight, uh, in, in very brief form. At the beginning, it will look just like the survey we asked parents to do, uh, a few, few, a week or so ago. Uh, and we will ask them to be, um, confirming information that they gave us, uh, in the survey before, particularly around transportation. And as I get into the slides, you'll see, um, more why that is. Um, nope, actually, on my list right here to cover it right now, sorry. Um, we, we are asking parents as much as possible, if you are able, to please seek alternate transportation other than the bus. Uh, looking at the survey, uh, data right now, uh, and we don't have the final guidelines for transportation, but we believe we're going to be able to have twenty-six students on a bus at a time. Students from the same family can sit together, uh, but we have seventy-seven passenger buses, which are the larger, uh, capacity buses, so, uh, that's fortunate. Uh, but e- either way, regardless of what model we use, that's going to require multiple bus runs. And the more riders we have, the more runs it's going to take, and the longer it's going to take until everybody is here. Uh, and, and the same will be true of the rides home. So as much as we can alleviate that challenge, we really need to. The guidance is coming to us daily, even yesterday morning, uh, updates and, and guidance and changes are happening, and so our plan, uh, has to remain fluid in that way. But the other piece that is in that survey that, um, is that if you chose in person, and after you hear some of this information, you are certain that you want to make a change, and you prefer to have your student, uh, be fully remote, that's absolutely fine. You can change that, and we would like to know that as soon as possible. So we're gonna send the survey. We're gonna close it at noon on Monday. Uh, and then whatever those results, uh, those final confirmations are that we have, we will have a plan that is finalized in terms of the schedule. We know parents are waiting. We're, we're doing everything we can to finalize that. We've narrowed it down. Uh, and we want to make sure that we have that plan to you the middle of next week. And I believe, um, it will be a plan where not only you'll know, um, when your students will be here, um, but, um, class configurations and, and, you know, spaces in the building, all of those types of things. We're hoping to have as many details as we can out to parents. Um, so, having said that, uh, let's get into, uh, the slides here. So we'll switch views and you'll be looking, uh, up behind me. And before I start, do you folks wanna, are you, are you able to see, or do you wanna? You're okay? Can't see? Okay. All right. So our reopening plans, uh, to date. So we are reopening with the following guiding principles. Um, first and foremost, the health and safety of our students and staff is at the forefront of our decision-making, and it will remain that way. Um, we believe that our students thrive, uh, and learn best when they are in school five days a week. Our goal will be to get all kids back here in the building on a regular basis as soon as we are able. And we very much look forward, uh, to our, to that time. Um, we strive to provide all students with rigorous and meaningful learning and appropriate social-emotional support. Uh, and our plan, uh, is subject to change due to community health conditions that are related to COVID-19 that are obviously out of our control. So our reopening goal, uh, is to ensure that Hancock Grammar School is providing to the best of our ability, a variety of instructional modalities to help learners advance in their studies each school day. We recognize that there is no one-size-fits-all solution for learners, and that we will need to use multiple means to engage and support our learners and our families. Our plans will adhere to the non-negotiable requirement set forth by the Main Department of Education and the CDC. So let's talk a little bit about that commitment to health and safety. Uh, as you can see tonight, I, uh, came in with, uh, some of the personal protective equipment that is starting to arrive. Um, several, uh, several different cases of things have, um, have arrived, and there's more, more and more coming every day. Uh, so we will be complying with all MDOEs and CDC requirements. And so for us, what that means, uh, is a six-foot, uh, distancing, uh, between students. We're going to provide a staff, uh, handbook, and we'll also have a student-parent handbook. Uh, we have a draft of that. It's nearly complete, uh, that we'll be asking you to approve, uh, next week. And, um, that will have all the required safety requirements and procedures. Uh, and our Return to School Safety Committee will have that to review, uh, tomorrow as well, and be looking at that for any, uh, additional revisions. We are going to be providing personal protective equipment for students and for staff, and that will include masks and face coverings. And so let me just talk a little bit more about what that looks like. We have a variety of different masks that we have coming. We'll have, uh, at least two cloth masks for every student. Uh, we will have clear masks that, um, for some students that need them, or for times when, um, maybe if we're working on something in particular and we need to see, uh, the students', um, face clearly. Uh, we do also have the clear masks that come down and come all the way back, uh, when there are, um, medical or health conditions that warrant, uh, a child not being able to wear, uh, a traditional, more traditional mask. We have, um, there are, um, hand sanitizer products that we have that are on the approved list. Uh, and also there are hand sanitizer dispensers that teachers can monitor inside every single classroom. There'll be hand sanitizer for use when students come in off the bus. Um, we have, uh, gloves, cases of gloves for every classroom, uh, gowns when needed. Uh, our nurses have to wear additional protective equipment, um, and, uh, wipes, um, eye protection. Thank you, Dr. Harriman, and I, and the list goes on from there. So, uh, if you can imagine it and you think we need it for safety, um, safety equipment, uh, we believe that we will have it. In order to limit exposure, only students and staff will be able to enter the building once school begins. Um, and we put that right up front in the beginning because we know that's different, we know that's difficult. It, it, it's hard. We, we understand. We're thinking about kindergarten students too, and, and thinking about ways we can, um, do some things virtually before school starts in terms of open house and, and, and such. But, uh, once school starts, uh, we will only allow students and staff in the building. Uh, so yes, that does mean that the drop-off and pickup protocols and locations and all of those things will be changing. So stay tuned, uh, as we, uh, get closer, we'll make sure to keep you informed of that. Uh, we're going to communicate, uh, items one through three that I covered, uh, with our, um, staff, families, and students through multiple means. That's required by the Department of Education, and we will provide training as necessary. Uh, and there'll be a requirement, uh, that folks either attend, uh, grade-level presentation, um, grade-by-grade for open house, that we know that they have, uh, received that information, or, um, that we, um, that they've signed off on the handbook that they receive it, uh, that they've received it, excuse me. Symptom screening at home for all staff and students. So this is very important, uh, and part of the required training. Um, students, um, parents and caregivers and staff members must conduct self-checks for symptoms prior to boarding buses or entering the school buildings each day. Students or staff showing symptoms must report their symptoms to the school and not be present at school on that day. So if you're sick, if you have a fever, if you have a cough, you need to stay home from school. We are awaiting some additional guidance on how long, if you're out, what does that look like? Physical distancing. So, um, if you can see, uh, we have some photos, I think you'll see here in just a minute. Adults will need to maintain six feet of distance from all others to the extent possible. They can have a, a close and brief interaction with a student to provide assistance, uh, but ideally, they're not closer than, than three feet to students. That's part of why the six-foot distancing between the desks and why it makes it challenging to fit the number of learners that we traditionally do, uh, fit in each classroom. So desks will be placed six feet apart in order to maintain that minimum three-foot distance when moving from one desk to other areas of the room. And six feet of physical distance is required for students while eating breakfast and lunch or snack, anytime they have to take their masks off to get a drink of water, things of that nature. And that's an important one to, uh, understand because that plays, uh, into, uh, played a, a large role in our decision-making around what we could realistically do in terms of reopening. And so we thought it might be, uh, interesting to see some of the pictures. Tim, could you go back just one, um, slide? Thank you. So that top slide, uh, is one of our larger classrooms. How many is that set up for, Dr. Harriman? That has nine right now. Okay, nine students, one teacher. Thank you. So a good reminder from Dr. Harriman that when we have educational technicians in classrooms supporting students, um, those are additional bodies in the room, and those spacing configurations have to be taken, uh, into account as well. And so then you can see in the bottom picture are, um, are mock, uh, students that were willing to come be guinea pigs as we set up the desks, um, six feet apart, uh, and the teacher can walk in between and have the three feet. And can you go to the next slide, Tim? Thank you. And so, uh, this, interestingly enough, um, is a great example of, um, just some of the logistical challenges that we're working through, that we absolutely will work through. But, um, you know, uh, this is what, five students or six students, Joanne? Dr. Harriman, sorry. Five. Um, they're in a line. That's just five students spaced six feet apart. So as you can imagine, once we have students in a classroom and we're headed down the hallway to Anywheres to, you know, make trips to the bathroom or lunch lines, or wherever it is we're going, out to the bus, into the school from the bus, those lines at six feet apart with a classroom of students are going to be very long. Uh, so there are just some different pieces that we'll get used to and we need to do, but, uh, it does take a lot of rethinking. Uh, I appreciate staff have been in the building. We have actually, um, rented, uh, units, and we are emptying rooms out, pretty much everything, anything that can't be sanitized, uh, at night. Um, any types of additional furniture or things that we can move out of the way to create more room. Our staff are, are taking those things out as much as possible to make as much room. Uh, thank you. Okay, so masks and face coverings. Um, so all adults and students are required to wear face mask coverings, and it has to cover their nose and their mouth. Face shields may be an alternative for those students with medical, behavioral, or other challenges who are unable to wear face masks or coverings. And the same will apply to our staff, uh, with medical or health, uh, concerns. Uh, face shields that are worn in place of face covering have to extend below the chin and back to the ears. We know this is gonna be a challenge, and we would implore parents, uh, younger kids especially, they have been home for a lot of time. And if they've been out a little bit in public to a store with mom and dad or someplace, they may have had a short experience with wearing a mask. Uh, but if your child is not used to that and not used to wearing them for longer periods of time, this is the time to please start, have your, have your child wear a mask for a short period of time, whatever you're comfortable with, but start building up a little bit of that tolerance, because once they're here at school, we're required to require them to keep those masks on. And so, uh, we know that's going to be one of the most challenging pieces, the length of time that they, that they have those on. So we're asking parents for your help with that, even, even, uh, as adults. I'm sure, um, you've all experienced, uh, the challenges with that. Hand hygiene. Uh, students and staff must receive training in proper hand hygiene. Um, they're required to wash their hands and use sanitizing gel, and these are just some of the examples. Um, so I want you to think about a typical school day and all the things that happen in a school day and the busyness of it, and, um, you know, join us in wrapping your mind around, um, you know, how we work these things in, uh, and, and also provide a meaningful, high-quality education. And we are going to do that, uh, but it's taken a lot of planning. Uh, so they need to, um, wash their hands or use sanitizing gel, um, before they get on the bus, after they get off the bus and enter the school, or after they get out of the vehicle before they enter the school, before and after they eat, before and after they, uh, remove or don a face mask, obviously after using the restroom, before and after the use of any playgrounds or shared equipment, and upon entering and exiting, uh, the school bus, sorry. Um, so that, that's a lot. That's a lot of, that's a lot of time. We'll have very clean hands. And because I'm, I don't, I, I do believe it's not, um, here later in the PowerPoint, forgive me if it is and it's redundant, but speaking of shared equipment, um, parents, uh, we know a lot of you have been, uh, out of work or underemployed because of the challenges of COVID. Uh, this is the year. We are not asking, uh, anyone to bring any school supplies. We're asking the opposite. Save your money. You do not need to buy school supplies. We need you to please not send your children with school supplies. Um, your child needs the smallest personal bag, the smallest backpack, or lunch bag that they can possibly bring, because we cannot use lockers. Uh, so we will have all the materials that every student needs purchased individually for each student. They'll have a container that's theirs. There'll be no sharing of any of those materials, and they'll stay here. So if you're, um, you know, if, if you're interested in some of the back-to-school materials and, and that works for you, that's great. Go for it, and those things can be at home for you, uh, on, on snow days, uh, or things of that nature. So thank you in advance for your help, uh, with that. You know, picture, picture your child in a, you know, in a, in a space with, with their desk and their personal items that have to fit around them, um, you know, the backpack. Think of it like being on a plane, and your, um, your, your carry-on luggage must fit securely stowed under the seat in front of you or in the overhead bin. We don't have any overhead bins, so it has to fit in the, on the desk or over the chair, so. Okay, personal protective equipment. Uh, we'll have additional safety precautions, uh, that are required for the school nurse and for any support staff, uh, when they're working, uh, with students in close proximity. When, especially when distance isn't a possibility, um, or if they require physical assistance. And those precautions must at a minimum include eye protection. So, um, you know, we're very fortunate. We have a full-time nurse here, Michelle Dupuy, um, and she's been working diligently throughout the summer, uh, on the things we need to do, um, but she'll look a little different this year because, you know, she'll have goggles on, she'll have a clear mask on over that, and, um, she'll have a gown on, so, um, a little bit different there. And, um, we will also have, as required, uh, there will be a dedicated space. Uh, if a student or staff member, uh, comes to the, um, comes to the nurse's office and they have symptoms that are COVID-like that develop during the day, we have to have a separate holding space for that student. Uh, and then, once that student leaves that area, that has to be completely sanitized before anybody else goes there. So, um, I guess, uh, along those lines, you know, lots of changes, but, uh, and, and parents, you know, for the most part, you're, you're great when we call you and we need your help and we need you to come get your child. But, um, please understand, if we call you and, and we say your child is sick, they have, they have to go, and we need you really to come right away. Because as typical in a school, that kid's gotta go out. We've gotta disinfect that area before another child who is not feeling well can go in there. And, um, we anticipate it's gonna be, could be, could be busy, um, as I'm sure, I'm sure you know. Returning to school after an illness, I'm just going to touch on this because we have additional guidance that's forthcoming from the, um, MDOE and main CDC. Uh, but six staff members and students, they have to use home isolation until they meet the criteria for returning to school. So along those lines, uh, we've had snow days before, and we're all familiar with that. And we are hopeful that we aren't going to have days where you get the call and we say, um, we have a no-third-grade day. Um, but that is entirely possible. Um, the sign-up rate and return rate for substitutes is, at this, uh, point, very low. Understandably, um, there are many people for health reasons or what have you that cannot come and be substitutes. Uh, we're expecting quite a shortage of substitutes. So, um, we're gonna do our best, um, to, to fill those. But again, you know, be aware, you know, there could be some challenges with that. So let's shift gears now from the, um, from the safety pieces and, and talk about, um, the learning part and the, uh, options. So obviously, um, remote learning is an option. We have students that, uh, that were, um, that have chosen to do remote learning. I think forty, uh, is the last count, uh, that we had. And so in, what was that? Sorry. Forty-six. Thank you, Dr. Harriman. So, uh, in March, uh, at the onset of the pandemic, um, you know, we needed an immediate educational response. Our teachers literally had one day, uh, to adapt their lesson content, um, to a remote format. Uh, we were fortunate in that we were able to go one-to-one, um, very quickly. Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Lots of foresight and planning and, um, continually working to keep our technology up to date allowed us at least to, um, get devices in students' hands, uh, and be able to stay in touch pretty quickly. Um, our goal really was to help our students maintain their current learning levels, um, during that shutdown and to help them grow as much as possible. Uh, and we know it was challenging, um, on many levels for students, parents, teachers. Our teachers really did the best they could, provided a lot of continuity. Um, we saw a lot of, um, social supports as well, emotional supports, um, lots of phone calls, lots of emails, um, and, and a lot of support for parents, and again, I appreciate that. And, uh, you know, they really hadn't had the benefit of any, any type of training for that. Uh, so we're going to be able to draw on those experiences, uh, but now we've had more time to plan, to learn, to adapt, uh, and we know we need to do a better job than we were able to do during the spring shutdown. Uh, so we truly believe our remote learning will involve, um, a lot of quality, uh, educational experiences for students, and we will have both, uh, synchronous and asynchronous instruction, and I'll touch on that in just a moment. Uh, but those learning opportunities will be designed to consistently advance student learning. Uh, and attendance will be taken, and grading practices will be in place. So that's important. If you're, if you're home and you're a remote learner that day, you need to be up and out of your pajamas and sitting maybe at a table or a desk someplace, ready to go. We'll be excited to, uh, to join you, uh, into the classroom, uh, Zoom or whichever platform they have, happen to be using. So what, what does that mean, synchronous and asynchronous mean? Uh, so synchronous, this is a great example right now where the learning is occurring at the same time, but not in the same place. So we have remote learners on, uh, right now, uh, and they are participating in their live instruction, uh, at the same time as their peers who are here in the room. And asynchronous learning, uh, which we also will have, is when the instruction and learning, uh, are not occurring in the same place or at the same time. So some examples include video lessons that a teacher might ask a student to go and watch on their own by providing a link, um, or online learning tasks, uh, that students complete on their own. Uh, you know, they could be on a Zoom and the instructor might say, you know, I've set up rooms, and now you're going to break out into these, uh, collaborative groups in these rooms, which the teacher is able to monitor. And, and then they may be working independently, uh, remotely and in-person together, but separately. So parent preferences, feedback from the survey. Uh, we currently have two hundred and eight students here enrolled at Hancock Grammar School. Uh, we have a hundred and sixty students whose parents would like to send their children back to in-school instruction, and that we have twelve still unconfirmed, uh, and only forty-six whose parents chose the remote learning option. So the good news is that a lot of students want to come back to school. Awesome. That's great. Bad news is, that causes some challenges for us. So, um, we are committed to quality in-person and remote learning, even with all these safety challenges, um, you know, and, and the, um, the difficulties that I'm sure you're envisioning in, um, making school feel as normal as possible, uh, in spite of some of the distancing pieces we have to put in place. But we still believe the best option, uh, is in-person for teaching and learning, uh, five days a week. But with those numbers, no matter what we, way we've tried it, with emptying the classrooms, um, looking at additional spaces, uh, hiring, looking at additional spaces, hiring, even though the realities of hiring a teacher right now are, are not, not great, there's just no way we can get everybody in at one time, unfortunately. And of course, that's not the news people want to hear. It's not the news we want to deliver. So what we know is that we will have students who are doing remote learning, and then for everyone who wants to come back, we will have a hybrid, hybrid learning model in place, at least initially. And if things change, we certainly, you know, can, can make transitions and can review that. However, due to the space, you know, the number of staff members, and to comply with these safety protocols, we are going to have to have a hybrid learning model. So parents will, will select from one of those two in the beginning, either a blend of remote and in-person learning, or, or one-hundred-percent remote learning. So the survey that we sent, that parents gave us that data from, that we're using right now, was non-binding. We said, absolutely, you can change your mind. We are going to send an additional survey out that will go out tomorrow. Again, we, we're going to need your information back by next week. We understand, we're, we're not going to present an exact schedule tonight, because we're still working through a few more logistics around that. But we will have that very shortly for you next week. We, we assume that most people are going to stay with the choices that they selected on the survey, but they may not, as they've watched this presentation, and certainly we're not trying to deter anybody from coming back, but, you know, things may have changed or they may have said, you know, "This is really not, this, this model is really just not going to work for my child." So absolutely, you know, if you're a remote, if, if you're an in-person learner doing the blended in-person and remote, and you determine that, that that's just not working for your child, you'll be able to change your child at any time over to one-hundred-percent remote. However, once we get started, and for a period of time, and we've set those, those class placements and, and things up, we won't be able, most likely, to add learners into that blended hybrid and, and remote, that, excuse me, sorry. That's the part where I told you, it's third night in a row, ninety-one degrees and three gymnasiums. My tongue's twisted, sorry. If, if you choose the remote-only option, it may be challenging for us to bring your student back if you decide to change your mind and you want to switch over to the hybrid, only because there may not be space. In many of the classrooms that we're looking at, we are very near or at capacity. We'll revisit that on an ongoing basis. I, I know that some, some districts are advising that it may not be, they may not make any changes with that until the end of the first trimester. We would hope to be able to do it sooner, only because we're smaller, but that doesn't necessarily mean anything. I mean, it, that's a numbers game. It just depends on how many students we can fit in. We'll do everything we can to accommodate that. And, and yes, we, we have been asked, do we think that a lot of the folks that have indicated their students are going to start, you know, in school, may find that after a little bit, it's just too challenging, especially for younger learners with the mask, and that, that absolutely could be possible, and we understand that. We'll work with you and do everything we can to, you know, to accommodate students. So the remote learning model, all eight students that choose that will receive fully remote instruction, and we could potentially have to shift to this model for the entire school, of course, if the Hancock County designation of green means, you know, changes to yellow or red. Red would absolutely mean we go fully remote, and yellow, it could, it would just depend on what the, what the case was here. If we have any positive cases of coronavirus here among staff or students, we will switch to one-hundred-percent remote until we're able to come back into the school. Our spaces are just too small. We have, you know, we will, we are planning as much as possible to keep students in grade level pods separated, and they won't intermingle too much. However, you know, they're going to ride on the bus together, they have after-school things that we don't control, you know, that, you know, there's a lot that's out of our control. So if we do have an outbreak, stopping that spread, we know, is vitally important. Transportation challenges. So again, based on those parent surveys, and all things remaining the same, we think that we can transport students with the hybrid model that we're going to use in two bus runs. And so we'll have to see. It's close. It's right on the edge. It will depend on how many high school students we also have riding. Part of what we're also working on is, you know, collaboratively, we have students that go to a multitude of high schools, and those students ride our buses. And so we're, we're trying to work through a scenario where we don't pick students up at five o'clock and take them and drop them off at the high school, only so that we can then, you know, do three more runs and, and bring students in in staggered half-hour periods. But it, it's challenging, for sure, for sure. So you need to be aware, please, that when it comes to transportation, we may not and likely will not have the flexibility for those typical last-minute transportation changes due, because of spacing guidelines. So it's happened to all of us, it's happened to me. You know, you have to call the school at two o'clock and say, "I'm really sorry, I was supposed to pick up my child. I, I'm running late from work, you need to put her on the bus." If there's twenty-six already on that bus run, and then on the second bus run, it's, it's highly likely you may be waiting until a, a third additional run for us to be able to, to get your child home. Those are the kinds of things that we are having to have all new protocols for. So please know that our wonderful front office staff are not trying to be difficult in any way, shape, or form. You know, we're going to do everything we can to help. We, we know, parents, we know you're, you're struggling with all of this as well. So please, encourage your child whenever you can. Students will be required to wear face covering at all times while they're on the bus, including entry and exit. They will be seated one per row, and distance according to the guidelines, with the seat directly behind the driver have, remaining open. They can, they'll be assigned to sit with family members to maximize space. You know, I, I don't know. I can think about my sisters growing up. We would probably need more practice with that between now and school, starting with wearing the mask. I don't, so that might be a good practicing piece. Students will be assigned seats. They have to sit in those seats that are assigned to them. And then when we load the bus, we will be loading from the back to the front, and when we offload, we will be offloading from the front to the back. So again, a lot of, lot of changes there. This would be a good place to mention, we're, we're thinking about that first week of school back, which starts on Tuesday, the eighth, and we are knowing that, more than ever, there will be a lot of time dedicated to routines, 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 and to learning some unusual routines. It's possible that our remote learners may start a few days after our, our hybrid learners, because that's not going to be necessarily, you know, useful for them. And it's also possible that we may need to start the first couple days with a half-day or shortened day. As we walk through some of these things with students, we're anticipating there, there are going to be things that don't work, and having time in the afternoon to sort of retool for the next day may be possible. And we'll, you know, we'll, we'll have any information on that out as, as soon as possible. And it may also help our students acclimate to wearing a mask all day by having a little bit of a shortened day in the beginning. You know, we're used to having that traditional calendar where we start for the last three days of August, and then the next week, we come after Labor Day weekend for four days, and then it's not until the third week that we have a full five-day week. And that's always very beneficial for, for students, so. And so that is the end of the information I have so far. And, and again, I know the most important, we know the most important thing that parents need is what is that schedule going to be like? We know other schools, over the past couple days, have just started releasing their schedules. Some have, a couple have voted on them, others are set to vote on them the beginning of next week, as we will be doing. So we know all schools are trying to have those out right away. And, and we know that parents need that for a, a hybrid model, so that they know, are their students here Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and not Tuesday, Thursday? Are they here Monday, Tuesday, and not, you know? What does that look like? We, we know you need that information, and we're working on that as, as quickly as possible. And again, we'll have a survey. We need you to confirm a few things. And then we'll be hopefully ready to bring that to you and ask you for your approval along with the handbook. And so, Dr. Herman, are there questions that you would like to answer that need to come my way? Or nope, all set? Okay, that's great. Thank you, those of you who came and braved the warm gym. Oh, you've got a question. I thought you were waving goodbye. Yes, ma'am.
So, one of the questions I have is, the two cloth masks that are provided to the students, those stay here and we wash them?
So, great question. So we do, we are looking at putting in a washer, machine, and dryer, and we are thinking, if, as long as everything works out on time. We may, we may have to do something else for the first week or so, but we talked this week about an idea where our face masks would actually be embroidered or have every child's name on, on the outside, and that perhaps the straps are going to be color-coded by grade level, and there would be two masks per child, so that they would switch them during the day. After they take them off from lunch, they go in the, you know, the red bucket that's just like the Sharp's bucket, and you don't touch them again, and you put a clean, not-sweaty face mask on for the rest of the day, and those are washed, and then they're right here at school. Students would still need to wear a mask to school and from school. So we know we'll have masks, but we're, we're thinking we might need to make a little change. Otherwise, any masks that students are wearing that go home, that are cloth masks, we, parents need to wash those and send those back with their students the next day.
And another question I had was, especially a lot of kids and staff that haven't been exposed to a lot of people lately, coming all back together, just regular, common colds and sicknesses. So I had a question about the, so if you go home with a cough or a fever, kid, staff, whomever, they stay home until the fever or the cough is gone, or they have to stay home for the fourteen days? I wasn't clear on that.
That's a great question. So we're not clear on that either, so I'll just put that right out there. And we recognize the challenge around that. It's a challenge for us, and, and we're fortunate here, again, we have a full-time nurse, because we do have students with medical needs. But we don't believe it's going to be fourteen days, but we're not sure about that, and that may depend on, if it's a cough or COVID-type symptoms, may depend on the availability to get tested and get results back. So we don't know about that. And what we don't know about are things like all the typical things we see in the fall, hay fever, typical colds, and then later on into November, December, flu symptoms that mimic COVID. We anticipate those things being very challenging for us, and we do believe for right now, unless, you know, unless we have different guidance, if we're seeing those symptoms, you're going to have to go home, especially, you know, fever, we know, is an indicator of that.
And then, another question. Sorry.
Sure, no, it's all right. There's a big, long line behind you.
Just one, just a second. I didn't write this one down. Mask breaks. So is there going to be, especially in kindergarten, is there going to be a spot in the room where they can go and take their break?
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up. I think I might have inadvertently deleted a slider, left out a bullet in, in, when I was going down through here. So it is required that students take mask breaks. Preferably, they take them outside. We have some logistics to work with around that. Do they, they keep the mask on, they're six feet apart, and they don't take the mask off until they get outside? And where do you put the mask? And then, until you put the mask back on? I mean, use your imagination. These are some of the, you know, logistical pieces that, that we just, we don't know yet. But students have to have mask breaks, and, so there'll be regular breaks, but we also anticipate teachers, you know, teachers know students, especially teachers of kindergarten students, for example. If, if we say something like, "Students need a mask break at least every hour," that kindergarten teacher, in the first few weeks of school, those kids may be taking mask breaks more often than that. You know, it, it just, it will depend. So, you know, we're, we don't, we don't know, but they, what we know is, in the classroom, unless they're six feet apart, they cannot take their masks off. That's part of why we believe we need to do a hybrid model, because we believe students need a water bottle, and they need to have it in their room. And if they're all six feet apart, they can at least drink water. You know, it's warm when you have a mask on. Potentially, they could eat snack in their, in their classrooms. We're not sure that's going to be a best practice, or whether they're going to come into the gymnasium. So, you know, we have a group working diligently on that. But those are, those are some of the challenge, great questions.
And then is my last question. Is every classroom going to have desks?
Every classroom that needs desks will have them, or they'll have, I don't know what that answers. Yes, we've, we've ordered desks or tables, and if they're tables, it's smaller groups of students. So for example, okay. So they'll be six feet if they're at desk. And so, and they all have to be facing in the same direction, which includes if they eat. So if they're all facing in the same direction, they can take the mask off, they can take a drink, they can have snacks, because they're facing in the same direction. In the cafeteria, the same has to happen for them to take their masks off. They have to all face in the same direction. For things like music, if they're singing, the guidance we received yesterday, they have to be outside, preferably, and they have to be fourteen feet apart with masks on. So again, that's new guidance that came yesterday, and, and it cannot be in a semicircle. They have to, you know, it has to be, so we're, we're working through, we're working through some of these, some of these challenges.
So we have a couple of questions on the Zoom chat. First one from Amos Trombeto is, is there a way that schedule will be out before picking between in-school or remote?
I wish there was, but there will not be. However, I'm glad you asked that question, because on the survey, there is going to be, well, there is already, a space on there, and we would like families to consider a new term we've recently heard of called podding. Not potting plants, podding with a D, P-O-D-D-I-N-G, where perhaps there are parents that live in close proximity to each other. And so let's say, for, for example, which is just an example, because we completely have not finalized it. Let's say that we have a group of kids on Monday, Tuesday, and a group of kids on, you know, Wednesday, Thursday. Can two sixth-grade kids from different families, can they request that their, that their children be together on the same schedule so that they can transport them together? And, you know, maybe, maybe Luke goes to work one day, and I have the kids at my dining room table doing virtual, doing the remote learning, and maybe they flip-flop to your house the other day. If you have interest like that, there's a place on the survey for you, for parents to note that, please tell us that. We make no promises and no guarantees, but we're going to do everything we can to, to help with that. We, you know, we, we understand that, you know, the challenges of not having your children in school five days a week.
Next question. Will art, music, and PE still be offered?
Okay, so yes, they will be offered. What we do think is going to happen is that we're going to use every available class space that we can in order to have, have these smaller class sizes. So some of those specials will look very different, particularly music, we know. Physical education, for example, we anticipate will be outside as much as possible, because setting up the gymnasium is going to require the whole gym, we're going to need more lunch periods that are going to take longer, and we have to clean between every lunch period, because that's a place where kids from different pods would be, you know, using a mixed space. So they'll be available, but it will most certainly look, look different. And, and art, we, you know, we know, for example, we, you know, we don't want to be sharing paintbrushes between classes and things like that, so we, we have to rethink a lot of things like that. The good news is, it gives us a chance to do lots of new, exciting things with your students.
One more question from Amos Trombeto, and I think I can take this one, Mrs. King.
Great.
The question is, is learning outside an option? And we definitely are exploring that as an option right now. We have two teachers working on outdoor classroom spaces, and we're actually getting pretty excited about the, the prospect of it, not just for this, but for the future. So we're working on that one. Next question is from Tara Mason, and I think you've answered it, Mrs. King. If we have someone that can help us with transportation of our child, can we request that they have the same hybrid schedule as another student?
Yes. Great question, Tara. Thank you. And yes, please, please do, because that helps us. If we can keep those kids together on the schedule to help you, that's two more students that aren't on the bus. That means we can get kids in here, you know?
Yep. And we'll do our best to, to make that happen. But we are trying to balance the, the numbers in the, in the, in the groups. Um, from Ashley Smith, "If a staff member who is homesick with symptoms has children, do the children need to also stay home if they are not showing symptoms?"
That is a great question. And that's every superintendent's favorite thing, you know, is to not have the answer, right? Uh, I, I don't know the answer to that. I, I am going to, um, go out on a limb and surmise that if the staff members' symptoms are COVID-like symptoms, um, that we would want the children to stay home as well. Um, which leads me to wondering about, um, if, well, the good piece, I would say, then, is in a hybrid model, since all students are doing some remote learning. If they did then have to be home for a few additional days, they at least could tap into the, uh, remote option for those days, provided that they were, um, well enough to do so. Does that answer the question? Oh, yes. Should they be, the question is, should they be bringing their devices home every day? We've wrestled with that one and we don't, we, 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 we don't have a good answer to that. We, I mean, they're going to need to bring their devices home for the remote learning. And so, what is the cleaning protocol look like for those materials that come back into the school each day? And, um, we know we need to do that and we have lots of wipes on order. And we're just, you know, again, trying to figure out the timing for how we, how we do that and fit those things in and fit, fit in the instruction. And, um, so, you know, bear with us. We're going to have some bumps along the way. There's no question about it.
Okay, um, let me see. Is, uh, from Amos Trombeto again, "Is the gym going to be used as a classroom learning space instead?" And, um, I can take that one, I think. Uh, and we're a little bit in flux on assigning the gym. But I will say, we're, we're, we haven't decided yet whether students are going to eat lunch in the classroom or if they're going to eat lunch in the gym. And if they do eat lunch in the gym, then we're going to need the gym for more time than we normally have had two lunches. So, we're looking at a model where we would have six lunches. And as Mrs. Kane said, we would need to clean and sanitize between times. And, um, so that's, uh, that's still, um, not been decided yet. And, uh, we'll let you know. The, uh, the next question asked by Amelia Trombeto. She wants to know if the library is still going to be in use. And that's another, um, piece that we are looking at that space as a temporary classroom space. And, um, but I will say that Mrs. Maury is going to be selecting books, uh, from her collection. And she'll still be having a library class in the classroom. So, you'll still have library, just won't have the library of books to choose from for a while.
Great questions.
Um, let's see, one more. Uh, so, from Amanda, it says, "Just to clarify from Amos's first question, you want parents to choose remote learning or hybrid model without us knowing the children's official schedule?" And, um, I mean, I'll, I'll weigh in and then you can.
Please do.
Um, so, your children are still going to have the, the subjects that they have had in the past. There's going to be some changes to some of those. Um, I'm not sure what, what you mean by schedule. Um, or maybe you're thinking, um, are they going to be going Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or something like that? Um, that, that's a good question. So...
Yeah, and, and we know, uh, you, there's not a good answer to that. And we, we know, you know, other area schools, you know, the same piece has gone out. And we, we know it's, it's a challenge. I'm, I'm dealing with that my, my same, with my, my own child. I, you know, I don't know what the days would be. Um, you know, I know it'd be a blocked schedule, but I don't, I don't know what days. Um, I don't know if it's two days, three days.
Right.
And so, it, it does make a little bit, um, challenging. I, I can say that most parents that we've talked to that are choosing the remote option, they're, you know, they, they know, they're certain, they, there are safety or health concerns or, um, the wearing of the mask or just, um, the nature of how different the school year initially, while we're going through this, is going to feel. They know, it's just not a good fit for their child. And so, you know, they're clear about that. And if you're, if you're on the fence, you know, we, we understand that and we'll get that.
Well, I should say too, um, just sorry to interrupt, but I think, you know, there's always going to be the option, if you don't like the schedule, that you can go remote. So, um, if your, your preference would be in-school, um, as opposed to completely rem- in-school hybrid, as opposed to completely remote, choose that. And then if you see the schedule and it's not going to work, then you can choose completely remote. Um, Tara Mason has another question. "Will six through eight rotate classes or will the teachers be moving?" The answer to that is the teachers are going to be moving. Uh, we, we want to keep students in the classroom as much as possible, uh, avoiding, uh, you know, large crowds in the hallways. Um, and that's including the specials, uh, so art and music. And PE will probably be outside and there may be activities in the gym. But, um, aside from those, where kids will be having their teachers come to them. Um, Mrs. Thomas asks, "Will there be dividers in place for classrooms that have tables to help maximize the number of students can be in a classroom?"
So, we, we've been advised, um, not to use dividers or, or, I, I need to rephrase that, sorry. Using dividers creates some challenges around the cleaning of them and having to clean all sides, um, every, every night. Um, or even between if any students were, you know, if there were any switching out. As of this time right now, we're not using them. That doesn't mean we won't be. Because right now, we believe that all kids will be six feet apart, even if they're at a table. They'll be, you know, at each end of a table spaced six feet apart, um, no different than if they were at a desk, you know. Is it likely that, uh, we can have a barrier that will be at least in between, you know, that table or, or something? Sure, especially, uh, if that's something that, you know, would help parents feel more comfortable. Um, absolutely, everything we can do for, for health and safety, not a problem.
From Crystal Burke, "Will there be notification if there are suspected cases to allow parents to determine if kids should stay home for those with contact?"
Yes. Okay.
That's the end of our questions. Okay, great. Good questions.
Really good questions. And, and again, parents, we empathize with you. You know, I, I want to thank you again for, um, you know, you've been kind and thoughtful to our, um, our, our teachers. Um, you know, they pride themselves on doing a great job. And there's a lot of unanswered questions. It's, you know, like, like nothing we've ever seen. And so, um, thank you for your support and understanding and your patience. Um, as we, as we get the answers to you, we know you need them. Uh, so, back over to you, Luke. Any questions here that I, that you need me to cover? I know you've been off to my side, so I didn't see you, so.
I have a few questions, yeah.
Sure, I'll just repeat them. Yep, either go to the mic or I'll just repeat them after you say them. Oh, you've got a mic, yeah. Would you use your?
So, just a few questions to clarify. Uh, will kids be able to have their own masks instead of a school-issued mask that come home?
Oh, yes, students can have their own mask. We encourage you to have your own masks for your, for your children.
And will there be any type of inspection of that mask when those kids show up every morning?
Well, it has to be, it has to fit, you know, it, well, I, Dr. Herrmann? Yeah, we, so we always have the option of washing, washing them here if we need to. And we will have lots of, you know, there'll be spare mask in, boxes of disposable mask in every single classroom. You know, in the event, you know, straps break, you know, things, things happen. So, all, all of those things need to be available. But yes, uh, you know, the piece about students having their own masks is that, yeah, every kid is a different size and something different fits or is more comfortable. Um, and, and so, yes, we, um, we encourage that. Thank you.
Another question was, "If there are snow days, given how remote learning was working last year, will snow days just become remote learning days to eliminate snow days?"
That's a great, that's a great question. Um, last year, we did not make up, uh, we didn't make up any snow days or do anything like that. I'm not sure what that will look like, um, this year. Um, we need to think about that a little bit. Um, maybe it's hard for me to think about that because it's 95 degrees right now, but...
That question I can talk about for a sec. Um, and I, I'm not sure what you said earlier, Mrs. Kane, but, uh, the thought occurred to me when you said that maybe there's going to be a call that says, "No third grade today." And so, I put it on my list to have, um, a discussion with our committee to have teachers create some sort of a home bag that is, um, you know, that's created and it's already at home so that, uh, it just stays there until something like this would occur. And it could be a remote day, or it could be. Because, you know, sometimes we have snow days. We also don't have power. So, the internet is kind of spotty on some, on some of those days. But students would have some things at home to do, practice, to practice on.
It can be challenging to, you know, when we're, um, you know, we'll, we'll be planned for the remote learning. You know, staff will be on-site doing the remote learning with, with students. When you have a snow day, um, they're home and they may be with an infant that now no longer has access to childcare and, and a couple twin toddlers. And that can make for an interesting math lesson for sure, but, um...
So, a follow-up question would be, uh, has Department of Education come out with any regulation on how many school days are going to be required? Is there any fluctuation? Is it still up in the air?
No, my, I, my understanding is that, uh, the board needs to approve the plan. And what I've, what I've seen is that, you know, they will once again be flexible, uh, you know, with the understanding, we're doing everything we can to make sure we meet those minimum, you know, the minimum requirement of 175, uh, school days.
And the last question was, if, with hybrid learning, is that going to be divided up by grade, by age? The concern is, we have a lot of families that have two or three students, three or four grades apart.
Oh, yes, that's a, that's a great question, Dr. Herrmann.
Yeah, we, we definitely are, are considering that and putting families together in, in different cohorts.
Yeah.
Yep.
It helps with transportation, helps families be able to plan. And, you know, in a lot of cases, if it's the day that, um, they're home and they're doing remote, you know, a lot of our middle-level students are good mentors to a, to a younger sibling, things of that nature, so.
Good.
I had a few questions.
Sure.
How will a situation with a child, student be handled concerning face coverings, removal or refusal? Do they get a break if that doesn't work? Are they to be sent home?
So, we have talked about that. And, um, this sounds, you know, this sounds really hard to say this because we could be talking about a five-year-old. And so, absolutely, you know, we're going to work with, with children and, and do our very best. But, um, a child who is continually non-compliant and cannot or will not wear a mask, cannot do in-person learning. Um, that's, that's very clear. So, uh, that's, you know, again, start getting your children used to that a little bit of time if you can over the coming weeks. Um, you know, we, we understand, obviously, our, we know our staff will be very sensitive to that. But the guidelines that we have, um, you know, the mandates around that piece are just not flexible. And for health and safety purposes, we cannot be flexible around that, so.
If a child is sent home sick or if it's possible because of the symptoms, is there any possibility of a child needing to be, uh, COVID-tested before returning to school?
Uh, that, I don't, I don't know that, actually. And I think that would depend on the availability of the testing, the child's doctor, whether the child recommends it, all things that won't be out of, that will be out of our, uh, out of our hands. I mean, obviously, um, you know, our school nurse and administrators were in touch with the CDC as needed, um, you know, for any type of, you know, advice or feedback on, on that, you know. I'm, I'm sure they would hear our recommendations, but I don't think we have any control over that.
And I just wanted, uh, put my input on the, uh, you was talking about devices being taken home each day. My thought was, yes, because if a student comes down sick or is in contact with somebody that is sick, they will need to stay home and the equipment would already be home with them.
Yes.
And invariably, there's going to be a time when they don't have the right equipment at home and we will figure out a way for the family to get that. Did you have another question, Kristi?
Okay. While you're hunting, um, Kristi, one, uh, one piece to cover is, um, the, the meal delivery service. Um, for our remote learners that request it, um, we will design, um, a, a program, uh, to meet those needs. And, um, and, and there'll be a program for the remote, I, you know, for students doing the hybrid as, as well. So, um, we're, we're working on that piece as well.
At this point, I'm sure there's no definite plan. I'd be willing to transport my children to and from school, but I would like to know what drop-off and pickup would look like as far as vehicle spacing, how people are going to wait or possible stagger times possibly, just kind of throwing these thoughts out there. And I'm sure you have all...
Well, and you, you know, most, many of you experienced the, um, the last day of school, the sort of, um, you know, the drive-through barbecue, um, you know, and a lot of school loops are like that where you drive through and, um, there's an attendant out in the loop and the child gets out and, um, the parent doesn't. But if you want to get out and escort your child to the door, there's an area where you can go over and park and walk, um, and, and drop your, your child off, so. Uh, and then having, of course, the buses have to be separated from that as well. Uh, and we can't have more than 50 students in a room at a time. And when they have to be six feet apart, um, that's, you know, even using the, the gymnasium and having the traditional morning bus room is, you know, one more thing that's, we're, we're not able to, uh, we're not able to do. So, if anyone at home has one of those really special magic eight balls that you shake and it gives you all the answers, we would love to have that, uh-huh, that item shipped our way.
Oh, I know we don't have all the answers. I'm just trying to throw some.
No, we wish we did have all the answers, Kristi. That's, that, but that great, you know, great question and another thing we're working through, so.
Being on the, on the parent's side of things, um, one of my big concerns is with one of my children who's special needs and he struggles horribly with transitions.
Mm-huh.
And the beginning of last school year was very, very challenging, to say the least.
Mm-huh.
Uh, he struggles after one day off, after weekends, holidays, a sick day. And, um, I was just wondering what type of supports will be in place to try to... I know he's not, you know, the only one. There's going to be other parents that have children with special needs. And if there's going to be extra supports in place to try to help this, um, I'm afraid that will greatly interfere with his education. Last year, he made huge gains, um, pre-shutdown in reading especially. He, he gained many, many levels and caught up to, to grade-level reading. And we don't want, we don't want to see him fall behind. And he actually has his own goal to catch up in math to his own grade level.
Awesome.
Which is great to see. So, I just, that is, these things are going through my mind with struggles that we have.
Yeah. Um... So, good job, mom. And what a great thing to hear that he has a goal. And kudos to staff that worked in partnership, uh, to help meet those goals from last year and have that, have that learning. And for a lot of students, um, the, the transitions and all the differences, uh, have caused a lot of anxiety and stress. And we know our guidance counselor is working on supports, uh, and additional pieces, uh, for students around that. The, the good news, I guess I can say, is on the days they are here, there will be far less transitions because, for the most part, students are staying in their room much more than they ever would have because they're not transitioning all around to the specials and things of that nature. However, yes, the, with the schedule change, it is, you know, it is different. It's not as consistent. Uh-huh, absolutely.
This is just, just getting to school.
Yeah, there's a related question. I'm going to follow up, same sort of idea from Crystal Burke. Uh, "Is there an addition to counseling for helping students and staff through the transitions that we are going to see?" And I think her reference is to kind of like, "This is a very different model of schooling and this is going to be frightening for some kids," you know? And it's a very, and it's frightening for some teachers, maybe some principals too.
It, it's hard life because what teachers want to do and what administrators want to do is we want to bring kids in, we want to grow them as much as we can every single year, all of them. And we love them all, even when they're mad at us or when they don't want to meet those goals. We, we want them here and we know you need them here. Um, so it irritates and saddens us to no end. it irritates and saddens us to no end, you know, to, it's been hard. It's, it's been, you know, it's been a hard summer, you know. We, and I, I think, you know, anybody who, who questions our, our drive or desire to try to get all the kids back, you know, just now, we have combed those guidelines and, and the pieces that are the mandates over and over and over. And we've looked for every little nook and cranny in them that we can find so that we can get more kids in, you know. If, if kids move out, if, you know, if, if something changes, and because we do get changes in enrollment all year long, and, and we were able to switch, we would switch, you know, back to bringing more kids back. So, you know, it's flexible, and we're going to do everything that we can.
We do have, I will say that Mrs. Snow, our school counselor, and I have been in a lot of conversations since March, really, but especially in light of the coming year. And we're making her schedule be a little different, so she's more available to students who, who need to talk, you know, individual students or a small group, if she can get them six feet apart in a, in a session. And she's been very, she's been combing through the, school guidance counselors as an organization, and I know she's very active in it, and she's been paying attention to all the concerns that, that that group has. And so I think we're, we're, we know that students are going to come with, they might be really excited to come and thinking it's going to be the same, but when they get here, it's going to be a real shock for them. I think, and that, we know that's going to be, it's going to make them sad, and it's going to make them mad, and it's going to be a hard time. So that, that's one of the reasons why we really want to spend some time in those first weeks of school, kind of easing into this, okay, this is very different, and it's temporary, but we got to do it for now, so we can be together.
And, you know, conversely, I, I would say that, you know, a lot of parents say, you know, I want to get my kids back. They need that socialization. And so you're, I'm sure you're seeing rooms set up and hearing these things and saying, there's not going to really be any socialization. It's definitely going to look different. But in terms of staff, even in support, one of the nicest things I've heard over the last two weeks is that the more staff come back and work together apart, the better they feel, because they're working on something together and commiserating together. And we know those pieces will feel good for students, too. So misery loves company, I guess.
So to back up what Christy had said, a parent messaged me and said, when we drop the kids off, are we going to drop them off at the front door? Are we going to drop them off at the bus entrance? And is that where we drop and pick them up as well?
We're working, we're working through that. But what we're working on is a plan where, where they're dropped off is the closest proximity to the learning space that they're going to be in for the day. So understanding that we have families with kids in different grade levels, so.
And another question was, what about water bottles?
So we are looking into having, so we cannot use water fountains. We are, we will have water refilling machines and encourage students to have water bottles. And it's possible, another piece we looked into in the last few days, is having a water bottle for every child that is left here at school that can go through, go through the dishwasher at the end of the day. We're not sure that's going to be the best piece, or be feasible, or that parents are going to want to, but our dishwasher is really, really, really hot. You know, it meets, you know, has to be certified. So, but you could take a class and, you know, put them in the dishwasher, or, or not.
One more question, is remote learning, it's from Amanda, excuse me, is, is remote learning a normal full day of class, or is it shortened?
We don't know the answer to that yet. I would say the majority are going to be a normal full day of school. It won't be, it won't be like students, you know, going... Oh, correct, yes. It's synchronized, not asynchronous. So, yes, in that point, I, I see. I think I was misunderstanding the question. Yes, so if it's your day, and you're in fifth grade, and there's math, and you are not on-site, you're remote that day, you will lug on for math that, at that time, and be in school. You just won't be in school in the building. So, great. Thank you. Helping me hear it, I needed to hear it differently. I appreciate that, Megan.
Tracy, Amy, anyone? Tara?
Okay, thank you. Great, great questions, parents. We will continue working on all the answers, and thank you very much for your time. You want to adjourn?
First of all, can't be said enough, the thank yous to the staff, teachers, how much you guys have put into wrapping up last year, getting ready for this year. Definitely an unsung hero group that does not get enough credit. So thank you to all the staff in working on this, getting ready for KDOs, getting work on, looking forward to the outcome of the survey, and pulling out a plan for next week. So with that, we will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Megan, for being here. Let us know when we're off.